I hereby call this meeting to order of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Independent School District on Tuesday, June 28, 2016, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:32 PM. Board members present are Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Nelda Sullivan.
And Jack Bailey.
Oh, and Jack Bailey is present. Board members absent are Mrs. Maricel Fiana. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting is duly called and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Marshall Kendrick and the pledges will be given by Mr. Kenny Fernandez.
Father, we need to thank you for this day and for this rain. We thank you for this district. We thank you for the dedication and the challenge that it forced. We thank you for administration and team that is working hard this summer to get prepared for a new school year. It seems like they come very quickly and we end one and start another. But Father, we're excited about it and we just pray that you'll give us the knowledge that we need and those that lead to what we need to do to do what's best for children. We thank you for those that served for us and front lines, first responders everywhere that put their life on the line for us. Pray for our nation, so in need of your guidance, so in need of your grace and forgiveness. May we just be with us tonight. My children protect us in any way we ask.
Amen.
Do you ever pledge a flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Kenny was looking up in the hole. We don't have anything on policy tonight, so we will not have a policy meeting. So we'll all be together for the Personnel Committee. So we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071 to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Opens Meeting Act when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. We will return at 7:30.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I'm sorry, one more. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, or lease or value of real property. And we will return at seven.
Is that your phone?
That's mine over there. Just step on it. That's mine. Billy Ween, is that that singer?
The board will reconvene in open session. We want to welcome each and every one of you here and we have a fantastic program for you tonight, I assure you. And we're going to start off with special recognitions.
Thank you, Board President, Mrs. Sullivan. We have several special recognitions this evening that we'll be celebrating, but I want to start with Captain David Garza. He's the president of the Pasadena ISD Police Officers Association. Captain Garza, if you'll come forward and introduce the nine winners of the PISD Police Officer Association Scholarships.
First, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Powell for giving us the opportunity.
They're gonna make you do the microphone, I apologize.
You gotta be recorded.
Oh, my goodness.
Microphone, okay.
Oh, my goodness. Golly.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, with this, I'm gonna like to take this opportunity to thank the board and Dr. Powell for allowing us to present our scholarships this year. This year, we were able to, this is, this year, we were able to raise $9,000 through our car shows you see up here on this, this screen up here. So the main thing I'd like to stress to everybody is how much we appreciate our sponsors, how much that they mean to this scholarship program. Without the sponsors, we wouldn't even have a scholarship program. When you take in the amount of money we spend on T-shirts and the amount of money we spend on trophies and plaques, I'd probably be up here giving nine $20 scholarships. So those are our sponsors. Big thank you to all of them. We have a couple of sponsors actually sitting up here on the board this evening. Mr. Fernandez, Kenny Fernandez, wave your hand, Kenny. Also, he did a little cameo at our car show. Thank you, Kenny, for showing up for that. Dr. Powell, she did a cameo also after, figured she was out there doing some muddin' thing. There was another event before us, so she should...
It was called the Rugged Race.
Yeah, the rugged. It's called the Rugged Race. So she came over to our car show to rest, so anyway...
It was a walk more for me than a race.
And it was, but she looked, she looked great afterwards, by the way, just so y'all know.
So bad.
Yeah, expect to see that in my Christmas bonus. Okay. First off, our, so like I said, we were able this year to give away nine $1,000 scholarships. Three years ago, we had our first car show. It was five $1,000 scholarships. Last year, we gave away seven $1,000 scholarships, no, eight, eight, I'm sorry, and this year, nine. We're also able to sponsor a team to play in the, the, oh, I'm sorry, help me, Mr. Bailey. Texas Invitational, the McDonald's, Texas Invitational Education Foundation Golf Tournament. I deserve a round of applause for that, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to have our top fuel sponsors, they're the ones who actually get a scholarship named after them. So if Chief Stuart Russell would step up, please, at this time, he's gonna present the Russell Family Scholarship and he'll be presenting that to Randy Torres. She's a Deport student. Her father, Israel Torres, works for our department. Come on up here, baby, right here. I'm afraid of him, too. Ladies and gentlemen, all of our police officers, as long as they're in good standing with the association, their children, regardless of where they go to school, are eligible for our scholarships as long as they meet the requirements that all the other students have to meet. And Randy met those requirements, so she was awarded one of our scholarships. Now I have Brian from Mack Hike Ford, top fuel sponsor. He'll be awarding Karina Gonzalez from CTE her $1,000 scholarship.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Karina.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations. Good job.
And most importantly, most important, there we go. Yeah, we'll get this right. Next up, we have Michelle Russell. She's representing EOG Resources. They're a top, top fuel sponsor. She will be awarding Leslie Gonchas from PHS her $1,000 scholarship.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Leslie. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Get your picture.
Yep, your picture.
Get your picture.
Next, we have Ahmed Bader from Dobie. He'll be receiving a $1,000 scholarship from the PISD Police Officers Association.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, next, we have Miranda Green. She's unable to attend this evening. She'll, she's being represented by Belinda Higgins. She will be accepting her scholarship for her. Big round of applause, please. Our turn to take your picture, Belinda.
They do so many good things for not only our school district, but our community as
Stay right down there with the kids.
Also, we had two other, we had two other individuals who are unable to attend. I believe the Mrs. Green, she's in a, is that, Mrs. Higgins, is that a softball tournament
a whole.
in Colorado?
Now I want to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Joseph Adr.
She's in a national softball tournament in Colorado, unable to attend.
He's principal at Pasadena High School, who will introduce Mr. Williams, who has
We also have Michaela Mayer from Pasadena Memorial. She was unable to attend.
a special diploma that he's gonna receive tonight.
And Miguel Campos from Pasadena Memorial, he's, I believe, he's actually attending
So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Sadr.
college at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
So thank you to our recipients and thank you again to all our sponsors.
Good evening to our board members, to Dr. Powell, and to all of our community that is here with us this evening. It is indeed great pleasure of mine that I introduce to you Mr. Billy G. Williams at this time, who's gonna come up here. Mr. Williams has been a resident of Pasadena since 1945. He first entered Pasadena schools as a seventh grade student at Jackson Junior High, and then he went on to attend Pasadena High School. Prior to his senior year, Mr. Williams elected to enlist in the United States Army, and he served from 1950 to 1953. During his service to our country, Mr. Williams served one year during the Korean War. Mr. Williams says that many of his fond memories of his times in Pasadena schools, he has many of them, but his deepest regret is never graduating from Pasadena High School. Like all his fellow classmates, Mr. Williams would like the opportunity to say that he is a graduate of Pasadena High School. So today, and this evening, under Texas Education Code, Mr. Williams is eligible to receive his high school diploma due to his service during the Korean War. Mr. Williams, on behalf of Pasadena High School, the Pasadena Independent School District, and a grateful nation, we want to thank you for your service to our country and we want to congratulate you as our board president, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, presents you with the class of 1951 Pasadena High School Diploma.
Mr. Williams and I have a lot in common. I am the widow of a Korean War veteran, and so it's hard for a lot of you to believe, but in the 1950s during the Korean War, things were tremendously different. When our young son was born, it took six days for my husband to receive communications. And so Korean War veterans have always held a special place in my heart. And without knowing anything about this ceremony tonight, as I came in the front door, Gloria Gallegos met me and she said, "Nelda, I have something that you might be interested in." In 1994, we went to Washington DC to a Special Education Committee meeting. And I asked her, I said, "Do you think there's any way in the world that we could go to the Korean War Memorial because it would mean so much to me?" And she said, "You know, I think that we can work that in our schedule." And we did. And the pictures that she brought me today are the pictures that we took today, and I want to read the inscription that is on the Korean War Memorial. It says, "Our nation honors our sons and daughters who answered the call to defend a country they never knew and a people they never met. 1950 Korea, 1953. Thank you very much for your service."
We're just gonna take a quick picture, so bear with us.
Madam President, if I may, I'm gonna present Mr. Williams also with our traditional Pasadena High School eleven inch pin that's worn over your heart because as of today, you're part of history based back to 1924. There's a rich history here of Pasadena, not just Pasadena Independent School District, but just Pasadena as a whole. So congratulate us again, and I'm gonna pin you. We won't do it like an army corps. We'll just go. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
He needs to meet his cord from the left.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Are you friends up here?
Yes.
Always. Yes, I have a very special friend that'd like to be here with me.
Carl Schwartz.
Carl Schwartz, my lag teacher in high school in the summer of 1950 when this dummy quit school. This was my teacher. And through the years, I've made the comment, I had to go to summer school later in my junior year, I failed something. But I have said through the years, I have always been glad that I failed that class. Otherwise, I would have never met Carl Schwartz, who was my teacher for six weeks. And then I went in the Army and went on to Korea and come back and I was a platoon sergeant. And I had the sergeant job in the world, it was training brand new recruits. Any of you that's ever done it, you know what I mean. And, but anyway, you train them eight weeks, ship them out, eight weeks, ship them. So I have a new bunch and I'm just standing there bored, looking up and down at them suckers. And my eyes lit on this guy, but I didn't know who he was. But every time I'd sweep that, I'd stop on him. He favors somebody I know. So I'll walk over to him, I said, "Soldier, what's your name?" He said, "Carl Schwartz." Tony said, "Sir." That was a mistake. Any of you's ever been a, you know. Well, I didn't talk nice to him. Now, sure, he remembers it. But anyway, I made the comment, oh, I said, then I said, "Where are you from?" I knew who it was then. I said, "Where are you from, Schwartz?" He said, "Brendon, Texas." I said, "Huh?" Still didn't know who I was. "You from Pasadena, Texas?" You can imagine what he was saying, still didn't know who I was. So I said, "Well, I'll tell you something. I have the fourth platoon, best you don't get any." Well, I didn't have nothing against him, but I knew he was gonna be any, 'cause his last name started with an S. So a couple of days, I had him going to the PX and a week or so, I had him a pass to town. He came back and taught school here and we got back in touch and we've been friends for many years. Could I add something to that, Bill? Basically, what he said is true. I had just gotten out of college and Bill was in my class and I noticed he was absent. So I asked some of the members of the classes, "Have y'all seen Bill?" And somebody raised his hand and said, "Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, he's joined the Army. He's not coming back." Well, lo and behold, in about a year, I got drafted. And guess who my sergeant was? He taught me everything I knew about the Army. It wasn't easy, was it? Taking up cigarette butts and doing push-ups and running 20 miles, but we survived, so looking at a couple of old soldiers going back 65 or more years, can you believe that?
And for those of you that don't remember or may not know, Mr. Schwartz is a former Board of Trustee member for Pasadena School District.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that. Yes, he was on this board for years. Incidentally, while he was on this board, I don't know where my daughter and son is, they're here somewhere, he handed them their diploma at Raven High School some years later. That's bad. So you're doing the freshman stuff. That was our nineteen fifty. My crew can come on any time they want. I think I'll bring you some casserole.
How wonderful. That's gonna be hard to follow, but we have some very special individuals we want to continue to recognize this evening. We have our Volunteers of the Year. We're very fortunate here in Pasadena ISD to have so many wonderful volunteers who help us, giving up many of their own personal hours to work with our students across the district and help our teachers and administrators. So we are very excited to honor them here tonight. We're gonna start this evening with honoring our outstanding adult volunteer for elementary. So first, we want to call for Carla Castillo. Carla, is she here? Come on up. She has been volunteering at Mathis Elementary for nine years, starting when her first child was in school there. She now has a first grader. Over the years, she has assisted with fundraising, school pictures, organizing storage closets, teacher appreciation lunches, helping with carnivals, book fairs, and serving as a classroom volunteer. You name it, she's done it at Mathis. She even shares her talents to create backdrops for Picture Day, and I was there on Easter Picture Day, and she did quite a great job there, costumes for student programs, and even decorations for teachers' lounge. She also has served for three years on the Parent Advisory Committee, and she spends tireless hours serving and is truly committed to Mathis and its students. Join me in recognizing Carla Castillo. I don't believe our outstanding adult volunteer for secondary is here, but I'm just gonna read this. Stephanie Frost, is Stephanie here? Oh, good, 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 good. They put Cindy, Stephanie's here, so we're excited to have her. If you'll come forward. She continually, you'll come on up, continually offers her time and creativity at Malillo Middle School. In her three years at our campus, she has assisted with book fairs, she's helped organize and work the spring carnival and chaperone field trips, including a recent one to University of Houston. She creates motivationally inspiring bulletin boards for students and staff to enjoy. Join me in congratulating Stephanie Frost, outstanding adult volunteer. We have next our outstanding student volunteer for elementary. This is a student volunteer, Maria Garcia. Is Maria here? Wonderful. Maria's coming forward, and as she does, I'm gonna read about Maria. She's a dedicated and committed student worker at South Shaver Elementary. She works in the library two days a week at South Shaver and in the office one day, faithfully. She demonstrates conscientiousness by thoroughly doing her assigned tasks. Maria truly exemplifies a great volunteer. Her contributions are priceless and her smile is contagious. Please help me in congratulating Maria Garcia, outstanding student volunteer for elementary. We also have an outstanding student volunteer for secondary, and I may mess up the name, but I'll try not, Riverly Renshler, is Riverly here?
These are Dobie Powell students who are accepting on her behalf. She's out of town, I think at a college visit, and they're friends of her.
Okay, so Dobie Powell students, if you'll come forward to accept this award. Just so you know, Riverly is a student volunteer from Dobie High School that serves at Atkinson Elementary through the Powell's Program. Riverly worked with the host program twice a week for two years, helping students earn accelerated reading points and be successful readers. She mentors in the Omega Program for two hours each week, and she initiated a program to help students interact with Omega children during spirit days at school. She also volunteers her time outside of school with the YMCA and the local fire station. We're excited about this. Riverly plans to attend college to become a teacher, so principals, get excited about that name. Congratulations. Next, we have a special award for our outstanding grandparent volunteers are Henry and Carolyn Schillings here. If you'll come forward. Henry and Carolyn Schillings have been wonderful volunteers for seven years at Teague Elementary. Their generosity and support of Teague and the staff goes way beyond normal giving. They assist with many projects such as canned food drives, toy drives, and teacher appreciation. The Schillings are caring and friendly grandparents that are always willing to help out. So please join me in congratulating Henry and Carolyn Schillings. Seven years, so that's more than one grandchild, it sounds like. That's awesome. Outstanding small business volunteer for elementary. We have Green Logic Lighting and Electric. Do we have a representative here today? Paul Tran, if you'll come forward. Let me just tell you a little bit about the owner, Paul Tran. He is a former student of May Smith and actually of May Smith principal, Martin Moffett. So, well, you can tell us stories later. He's a great example of an alumni giving back to his community. He was so inspired by Mr. Moffett during his time in Pasadena ISD, he wanted to give back in a big way. After several meetings, it was decided that the fourth grade students would be awarded the treat of a lifetime. Mr. Tran organized and funded a trip for the entire fourth grade class to go to the Alamo and Six Flags via charter bus. He's got some very happy fourth graders that love him very much. What an exciting and life-changing opportunity. Way to go. Thank you so much, sir. We have our outstanding small business volunteer for secondary, Shades of Texas, which is represented by the owner, Mr. John Matthews. Mr. Matthews is another fine example of a formidable... She also volunteers her time outside of school with the YMCA and the local fire station. We're excited about this. Riverly plans to attend college to become a teacher, so principals, get excited about that name. Next, we have a special award for our outstanding grandparent volunteers. Our Henry and Carolyn Schillings here. If you'll come forward. Henry and Carolyn Schillings have been wonderful volunteers for seven years at Teague Elementary. Their generosity and support of Teague and the staff goes way beyond normal giving. They assist with many projects such as canned food drives, toy drives, and teacher appreciation. The Schillings are caring and friendly grandparents that are always willing to help out. So, please join me in congratulating Henry and Carolyn Schillings. Seven years, so that's more than one grandchildren, it sounds like. That's awesome. Outstanding small business volunteer for elementary. We have Green Logic Lighting and Electric. Do we have a representative here today? Paul Tran, if you'll come forward. Let me just tell you a little bit about the owner, Paul Tran. He is a former student of May Smith, and actually, a May Smith principal, Martin Moffett. So, you can tell us stories later. He's a great example of an alumni giving back to his community. He was so inspired by Mr. Moffett during his time in Pasadena ISD, he wanted to give back in a big way. After several meetings, it was decided that the fourth grade students would be awarded the treat of a lifetime. Mr. Tran organized and funded a trip for the entire fourth grade class to go to the Alamo and Six Flags via charter bus. He's got some very happy fourth graders that love him very much. What an exciting and life-changing opportunity. Way to go. Thank you so much, sir. We have our outstanding small business volunteer for secondary. Shades of Texas, which is represented by the owner, Mr. John Matthews. Mr. Matthews is another fine example of a former student in our school district. Hello. He has been wonderful and helped out our Parkview Intermediate Principal, Rob Hassan. He came to their aid and helped beautify the campus for the 50th anniversary, and if you've been over there, it's amazing. He transformed the atrium from a dismal area, Rob, why'd you let it get dismal? No, I'm kidding, to a beautiful atrium area. He uses the visits at the campus as an opportunity to speak to students about the importance of paying back to what is given to you. He's a true role model and volunteer at Parkview, and we are forever grateful to him for his vision, dedication, and unselfish donation. His only request was to make sure his former coaches, Mr. Tom Allen and David Kissinger, knew that his efforts were in their honor. So, thank you, Mr. Matthews, for your help with the school district. Our outstanding large corporation volunteer is Albemarle. Is anyone here today from Albemarle? Just to read a little bit about them, for the past 20 years, they have been volunteering partner for Jackson Intermediate. Their employees have participated in uniform drives, belt donation, breakfast taco sales, and art supply donations for students. They have funded computers, attendance incentives, trophies, for athletic awards, and many more activities. They provide the PALS their shirts each year, and sponsor the appreciation breakfast each year for the PALS. They're instrumental in supporting the mentor program for at-risk students, and they are always eager and willing to help out and encourage and support students. That is why Jackson feels they're so deserving of this award. So, congratulations to Albemarle.
Dr. Powell, since they're not here, I will accept this on their behalf. My husband is a 35-year retiree of Ethel Corporation. I have a son who's a 30-year employee of Albemarle Corporation, and I have a grandson who's an employee of Albemarle Corporation. So, I'll be glad to see that this guy gets the right place.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We have an outstanding organization volunteer, Zion Lutheran Church. Do we have a representative tonight from Zion Lutheran? Just so you know, they're helping not only Christmas gifts at Fisher Elementary for students and siblings for the last 10 years, but every year when school begins, Ms. Holly Harris reaches out to see what kind of supplies are needed there at Fisher. During the Christmas holidays, she does the same thing, getting gift items for students that are in need and their siblings. So, we are very thankful for Zion Lutheran Church. Our next group, thank you. I think this is our last one. Albert Nguyen and Holly Gonzalez are here, and they're coming forward again. They're part of our Dobie PALS program, and they are energetic and enthusiastic and youthful to help with describing this PALS group. For the last, I'm reading. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For the last three years, they have helped at Fraser Elementary. In fact, 105 high school students from Dobie go over and participate in working with the fourth graders, all the way down to the kindergartners, on various activities. Each PALS is matched with a Fraser student to help foster relationships and work together in a one-on-one mentoring situation. This allows them to get individualized attention from the Dobie students, and helps to positively impact the student achievement. So, we want to say thank you to the Dobie PALS for not only tutoring, but also helping with the school carnival, math nights, track and field, and school dances. This work of the Dobie PALS exemplifies the quote, "Many hands made light work." So, go Dobie. And I believe that's all of our special recognition. That was a great night. So, thank you.
The next item is public comments, and we don't have anyone that's signed up. So, we'll move right along for, on our agenda. Item three, the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say. And those opposed? None, so the motion is passed. The next item is item four, personnel section.
Are we going to switch that around?
No, it's gonna stay the same.
We just put it in this order. Start with that.
Thank all of you for coming. Under our personnel section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of additional personnel and other payroll increases for 2016-17 school year.
Does someone move?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, and a second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Consideration, possible approval of administrative personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through L.
Motion is made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed.
May I introduce these, please?
We'd love for you to, and they would love for you to also.
Guillermo Acuna. Is Guillermo here? Guillermo has been named counselor at Nelda Sullivan Middle School. Did you bring family with you? Can you introduce them to us, please?
My wife's here now. My son Jacob. My daughter. My mom. And my kid.
Congratulations, and we look forward to you serving in your new position. Kim Roland Edwards. I believe Kim is on a cruise, so.
No.
No, no? Were you supposed to be on a cruise?
No, but I'll go.
Take me with you.
Somebody else on a cruise?
You gave me the wrong name?
Keith, you're about to be on a cruise.
I apologize, Ms. Edwards. Ms. Edwards has been named position of counselor, parent coordinator at Burnett Elementary. We certainly congratulate you on your new position. Did you bring family with you?
Yes, ma'am. I'm from the Hudson. I also work in Pasadena.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
And my son, my six-year-old son Bryson, he's not here, he's on vacation.
Oh, he's on the cruise. Very good. Okay, Jessica Mendez. Is Jessica here? Hi, Jessica. We met earlier. You're an early bird. Okay, Jessica has been named LSSP, and we certainly welcome you to your new position. Congratulate you on your new position. Do you have family with you? We're family, so congratulations. Kathryn Nemeth. Is Kathryn here? Hi, Kathryn. Kathryn has been named diagnostician for the 2016-17 school year, and we congratulate you on your new position. Do you have family with you?
Thank you. I have my husband, my wife.
Erica Garza.
She's in Cancun.
Okay. That's the one that's on the cruise. Okay, all right.
We can't get it right.
Marcia, help Keith out.
Keith, you remember that talk that we had previously? Forget it. Erica has been named Intervention Special Education Instructional Specialist. So, when you see Erica, congratulate her, and wish her well in her new position. Jim Bob Jacobs. Is Jim Bob here? Jim Bob has been named Assistant Director of Transportation, and we certainly congratulate you on your new position. Do you have family with you?
I do, I have my wife here, Bonda, and she's there. Y'all giving cruises away?
He'll give you a box of Calgon.
It's not a cruise, it's just a flight, right, Keith? I'll take it.
We certainly wish you well in your new position, Jim Bob, and congratulations to your wife as well. Amber has been named Assistant Principal at South Belt Elementary. We certainly congratulate you in your new position, leaving Golden Acres and moving to South Belt. Do you have family with you?
I do, yes. I have my husband Jason, and our daughter Lila. And my amazing new principal, Keith.
Leslie Constant. Is Leslie here? Hi, Leslie. Leslie has been named Assistant Principal at Pasadena High School, and moving from Rayburn to Pasadena High School. We certainly wish you well in your new position, and I see you brought family with you.
Yes, this is my son, Ricky, and my cousin, Justin, and my district science team. And they came to Pasadena to have family.
Good.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
I would like to mention the young lady who just got the assistant principal's job right there. Would you stand up, please?
Oh, Lord.
Would you show me what color your blouse is? That looks like eagle green to me. You got rid of that Rayburn stuff, haven't you? Good job. Good job, Savadra. Good job.
Keep your mouth closed, Fred. Okay, Joseph Horton. Is Joseph here?
Yes, he's here.
Joseph has decided to come back to Pasadena, and we welcome you home. And he is going to be Assistant Principal at South Houston High School. I see you have family with you?
Yes, yes, I have my family, my lovely wife, Ruth, and my kiddos, Sydney, Josiah, and Jeremiah, and my mom and dad, Melody, and my principal, Ms. Winkie.
Awesome.
So, you'll be singing for us.
And you got the right color tie on, too, right?
Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Morgan, I have something to say.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
I want to thank the Hortons, his parents, because you did the right thing with that young man.
That's a fraud.
He is, he is a positive influence on young people, and I appreciate it.
Kevin Melgarde. Is Kevin here? Hi, Kevin. Kevin has been named Special Education Coordinator Evaluation Services for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay. And so, Kevin, did you bring family with you?
Well, I'm from Wisconsin, so my family is Houston family. So, I have dear friends and colleagues, Marian Hogan, Dr. Pat Kennedy, and Dr. Brian Alton.
We wish you well in your new position, and welcome to Pasadena ISD. Jennifer Bushley. Is that correct, Bushley? Okay, I was told that was right. Now, if it's not right, you talked to Keith Palmer right there.
Poor Keith.
Jennifer has been named Early College High School District Coordinator, and we certainly wish you well in your new position.
Thank you very much.
Did you bring family with you?
I did. These are my parents, Tom and Connie, the reason why education is so important to me, and a couple of my work family over here, and then my new director, Karen Price.
Awesome, awesome. Arturo Del Barrio Jr. Arturo has been named Director of Communications, Community Relations, and we certainly welcome you to Pasadena, and we look forward to working with you in the near future.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Congratulations.
You know, after you've been here tonight, and you've seen what a great time we have at door meetings, you may want to change your life.
He said he's ready to promote it.
I see you brought family with you. Would you like to introduce them?
This is my cousin, Kristin Salinas, and my aunt, Blanca Salinas. Kristin, actually, used to work here several years ago. Her first job was at Pasadena High.
Rayburn.
Rayburn.
Hurry her back.
Our girl, why is your, what'd you say, cousin, niece?
Cousin. Why did she leave Rayburn, and why isn't she still here?
I went back to my alma mater.
Ah?
I went back to my alma mater.
Where's that?
Her, like, high school.
Oh, God.
We're on video. We are on. We're on video.
All right, speaking for Pasadena, good decision.
And Madam President, that is all of the addenda pages at this time.
Have we overlooked anyone that was anticipating your name being called?
Or a free cruise. Either or.
This is the end of our personnel section, and we know that's the reason a lot of you came. So, we'll excuse you to go home and watch TV, or whatever, if you'd like, to stay and listen to the rest of the business of this district. We'd be delighted to have you. So, we'll give you a few minutes to clear out, if you'd like. It's so nice to meet you. Look forward to working with you.
I'm excited to work there. Congratulations, great handle, Jan Bailey. Nice meeting you all.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. She must have cleaned it out.
Didn't you tell me? Okay, okay. It made people laugh.
Y'all want a picture up here? We got time to go for it. Yeah.
Oh, he knows how I feel.
What's it called, a loose tire?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, if we can, if we can continue with our meeting, with or without Mr. Roberts
It certainly got quiet quickly, and we'll continue with our meeting.
Can I ask one quick question on the personnel issue?
One quick question, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Tell me what the process is gonna be with the Dobie ninth grade principal. I'm sorry, I got a quick thing, I have to respond to it, but you've got a principal at the ninth grade, and you've got a principal at the... and you've got a principal at the other campus. Originally, I thought that you'd have one principal, and you were gonna have a Assistant Principal, or how are you gonna, how is that gonna be handled?
Well, what we've put in here on page 151 and 152 that you approved just a little bit earlier at semester. We're gonna name a principal, it will not be at a high school pay rate, but we're gonna name a principal for the ninth grade. They will still report to Mr. Moses, and that campus will be run with concerted efforts between the two campuses. But there will be someone that, on a day-in, day-out basis, that we rely on and is responsible for those students and staff.
I think that's the only way it can be successful.
Yeah, they've got, those two have to work together.
Oh, beautifully.
If you have, if you have two chiefs, you run into a problem. As long as one of the chiefs knows who the head chief is, that's, that's the only way it'll work.
I think we will articulate that as we go forward in the process of interviewing and hiring that individual, but they'll have to work closely together.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Item number three in the Personnel section. Consideration and possible approval of medical benefits change effective August 2016.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Fernandez, you're so soft-spoken, I can hardly hear you, so if you would speak up a little bit, I would appreciate it.
My apologies.
Next item, consideration and possible approval of renewal of RFP number 13-035 for term life to Minnesota Life Insurance Company.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Consideration and possible approval of renewal of RFP number 13-035 for dental plan to Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Consideration and possible approval of renewal of CSP number 10-031 for permanent life insurance.
I so move.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. And moving right along to the Education Foundation. Consideration and possible approval for the Connect Personalized Learning High School Courses to be weighted on the 5.5 grading scale beginning in August 2016.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Consideration and possible approval of revising the current high school weighted grade point system to an equitable weighted grade point system for all high school students.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. Consideration and possible approval of 2016-2017 pre-C through high parent-student school handbook.
I move that we approve the handbook.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval to continue participation in the inter-local government records management cooperative, coordinated, and administered by the Harris County Department of Education.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of the 2016-2017 Memorandum of Understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris County Juvenile Board.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed.
And Board members, just so you know, Dr. Stallings will be taking over for Steve Lehman regarding any coordination of efforts with JJAP. So that'll be in her new role.
Good job.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of application for TEA Foreign Exchange Student Expedited Waiver. Expedited waiver.
Expedited waiver, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
How many exchange students do we average, you think, in the district?
Do we have Jamie Burt? Wonderful. We have the expert.
I have a number.
Oh, good.
We kind of seesaw every year. This current year, we have 11. Last year, we had eight. And the year before, we had 16. So it just depends coming in and out. I mean, so far for 17, 18, or 16, 17, we only have two applications in.
Really?
Yes, but we'll get bombarded right before the beginning of the school year.
Where does the majority of them attend school?
Dobie, mostly. Between Dobie, Rayburn fluctuates with quite a few, but they have a coordinator on their campus, or one of their teachers is a coordinator, so he places kids always within the Rayburn attendant zone. That's where the bulk of them are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. Consideration and possible approval of inter-local agreement, Region 11 Education Service Center.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Where's Region 11?
I was thinking the same thing.
Fort Worth.
Fort Worth.
Thank you, John.
Any more, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of subscription renewal contract with ESC Region 11 for Discovery Education streaming for the 2016-17 school year.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
How long have we been doing this?
Is Chris here? Oh, Melissa. Will you come to the microphone? I'm sorry, just so we can have it for the record.
Originally, Region 4 carried the subscription for Discovery Education. Is it on? And we have been in agreement with them since they carried it back in, I believe, 2001. And Region 11 took over for the state whenever Region 4 no longer carried the contract for the state.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of 2016-2017 agreement for adult education services between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of 2015-2016 Consultation Services Agreement between Region 4 and Pasadena Independent School District.
Is this supposed to be 2015-16?
Gloria, you want to explain why the years are different in the two paragraphs?
Okay, the consultation has to happen this year, 15-16, so that we can move those campuses into school-wide for 16-17. Does that make sense?
So is it happening this summer, the consultation?
Consultation is happening, yes, before we can move them.
Okay.
I have a question. Wait till question, we haven't made a motion yet.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
Okay, I, I move that we approve the motion.
A second.
Second.
Questions?
Would you explain a little bit about this, please?
About the school-wide?
What it means, and what's it for?
All right, so we receive the funding from, from the federal government under Title I Part A that focuses on providing services for children that have the greatest academic need. So what happens is that when campuses are moving towards becoming, like the new campuses, the first year that they are operating a Title I program, it has to be a targeted assistance. What that means is that they can only serve a certain number of children, and they have to serve the children all year long. The funding that they received through Title I Part A is very restrictive. They can only use it in that group of children. So they have to spend a year going to workshops at Region 4 to be able to move them into school-wide campuses. What that means is that they have greater flexibility on the funding, so that they can use the funding to consolidate it with local, with other state funding. And now, they have the flexibility of using it for the entire school, not just the group of children. Does that make sense?
So it's more than money, what about the consultation?
Well, it's a requirement the TEA has that Region 4 has to give us consultation. Because what that does, the $660 bottom line, they generate a letter that say they are ready to move to school-wide.
Oh, my.
Okay?
That makes sense.
If we want to run them school-wide, we have to go through the process.
And they're allowing us on Sullivan and Hancock to go straight into school-wide, because the students that were served at the other, the campuses they're coming from was, were school-wide, correct?
The staff.
The staff.
So we got special permission. This is the first time that they will let us do Hancock and Sullivan to begin with. They will start a school-wide projects, because the staff that is coming from the other campuses are all school-wide. So that, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. Any other discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of the annual renewal of the Region 4 Video Conference Contract.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval for the rejection of all bids submitted for CSP 16-013 Network Electronics to Light Dark Fiber.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
I'm trying to understand why they were rejected. See, what's that?
I said they probably didn't meet respect requirements.
Yeah, it said they were...
Well, I know, but I mean, I'm just trying to...
That's all I'm telling you.
None were acceptable.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was. The, the equipment that was bid didn't meet the functionality that we really wanted.
Right.
And so we had to get more granular in, in the specs that we were asking for. So we, rejecting all these, and we turned around and put in that DIR, that DIR1 to all the same vendors. And so we got the responses back, and, and the M&amp;S actually had the functionality that we was looking for to run our network.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr.
Thank you, Steve.
Fernandez. And we've had some discussion, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of Rice University Open Saks Tutor Educational Entity User Agreement.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the San Jacinto Community College District, SJCCD, regarding Pasadena ISD Early College High School ECHS Programs.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of multiple grant awards.
I move that we approve the multiple grant awards.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. I do have a question. The Mininger Magic Grant, is that a new, a new grant? And actually, the Mininger Clinic, is that the group that will come out? Or do they come out, or do we send students there? How exactly does that work?
Just while Gloria's coming up, Olivia and her team have received grants over $8 million this year alone. So just want to recognize them. And still waiting to hear on some, so we're not... Year hadn't closed out yet.
All right, to answer your question on the clinic, the clinic exists in the Houston area?
Yes.
And you know, if you know, if you're aware of what they do, they're very expensive.
Very.
So not everybody can afford them. So what they have done is the, the foundation that funds them gave them $1 million to be able to allow others to apply for that funding. And so they invited districts as well to be able to, to apply for this. And so what we are going to be doing is, there are behavioral specialists under the Regular Ed umbrella, then we are going to be able to provide to children, services for the children in the after-school program that have mental health issues, to be able to work with them. Different tiers, depending on what they need, whether it's individual, or it's... Different tiers, depending on what they need, whether it's individual or it's group settings. And so what Meninger is looking for is demonstration sites. And they're very impressed with what we have established already, and so they're very excited to be able to expand to our district. We're very excited about it.
I'm very excited, too. I mean, that is, that's a very prestigious group of people involved in this, so it really... Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think it's something that we need. I think, you know, all these grants are awesome, but this one caught my eye, so...
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Next item is for information only, the School Health Advisory Committee.
And then we do have a presentation.
Okay. Good evening. It's not a presentation, I'm just going to read to y'all your annual report. It's good to be here tonight. Thank you all for sticking around, okay? The 2015-16 school year has been a time of building and strengthening our School Health Advisory Council and its relationships with our community partners, who make up sectors from the coordinated school health model. The goal of these community stakeholders is to develop resources and networking to provide support and tools to assist with our mission, to promote schools' social, emotional, and physical well-being of our school community. I'm sorry, this thing is like in my face. My report's going to focus on our five committees, and that we've established to address each sector of the coordinated school health model. First up is nutrition and education and environment. Our SHAC has provided support and encouragement to ensure all eligible students and parents were aware of the opportunity to participate in the universal breakfast program, the afternoon snack program, and the summer feeding program. The Texas Hunger Initiative, which is a program from Baylor University, has selected Pasadena as a model community to help bridge the gap between need and resources for those qualifying for the summer meals program, and we're helping to facilitate locations around the city and district where our students are most in need. SHAC has continued its longstanding partnership with Harris County Public Health and Environmental Services and the Healthy Living Matters Pasadena Task Force to promote sustainable changes, making Pasadena a healthy community for our students to thrive. These include the Healthy Corner Store Program, Healthy Dining Matters Partnership with locally-owned restaurants, and another partnership included offering cooking classes at Jackson, San Jacinto, and Rayburn for parents and students to learn about good nutrition and healthier cooking techniques. Families were provided with ingredients and recipes to take home at the end of these lessons as well. Because of the Healthy Living Matters Pasadena Task Force and Harris County, the district, the City of Pasadena, and other stakeholders received a $250,000 grant and a donation of property from the City of Pasadena for the build project, which will develop an indoor hydroponic garden, known as the Clara Project, that will produce fresh fruits and vegetables for the surrounding neighborhood, addressing concerns about lack of access to affordable fresh fruits. The build project will also provide opportunities for our students at all levels to view, learn, develop skills, and spark interest to continue developing these food sources into the future. In health education, SHAC is drawing on the expertise of the Bay Area Council on Drug and Alcohol, otherwise known as BACODA, and their alcohol prevention program. BACODA did several presentations at the Spring Parent Forum, offering numerous education, prevention, counseling, and recovery resources they have for students as well as parents. We've passed along the information to our lead health teachers, so we can utilize these resources for our students. We've also been asked to attend the Behavioral Health Institute next month in Austin. The University of Texas MD Anderson Cancer Center presented the Aspire Program, which is an evidence-based smoking prevention and cessation program. Students can participate in online, this is designed for 11-17-year-old students. The group also presented to our high school health teachers, and because of their positive response, the district entered into an MOU to allow students in all health classes across the district to participate in the program. Physical education and physical fitness. One of the legislative requirements for the SHAC was to find opportunities for students to be active during the school day. As part of coordinated school health efforts, action-based learning was an opportunity to easily incorporate movement into the classroom and see that goal accomplished. Because of the great results from our participating schools, Pasadena formed the Kinesthetic Classroom Collaborative with Spring Branch and ALIP ISDs. The goal is to give support and training to classroom teachers and encourage more movement with intention in the classroom. Family and community involvement, well, first thing up, those parent cooking classes came from that chair in a board meeting about a year and a half ago, so. The SHAC has formed some great partnerships with other community stakeholders, but we need to strengthen our council by engaging more parents. Our goal is to meet or exceed the required 51% parent participation. As such, we have asked you guys back in February for your support to appoint a representative for you, your own representative to our council, and we're looking forward to having those parents in place for the August Executive Board Meeting, so that we can get started planning our 16-17 school year. Additional highlights, and for 2015, we are the It's Time Texas School Health Advisory Council Award winner for the second year. We have received some awards from Catch, which is Angela Rubio is our Catch champion, and Pam is our Living Legacy. And then 2015 Excellence in Wellness Award, it was our first year to roll out that award, which recognizes campuses who exceed in their coordinated school health efforts. We had two campuses receive Bronze Level Recognition, three silver, four gold, and one platinum. We have a Tafford Exemplary School. Red Bluff was the only campus in Texas to receive the Level 1 Tafford Exemplary Award, which is the highest level of the award. And last but not least, I'm pleased to announce that we will have a new chair for the 16-17 school year. We finally found somebody, and the lovely Dorothy Elrod Joplin, she will be filling this role, and I'll be standing around nearby to help if she needs it. Dorothy was not able to be here tonight, she is an ER nurse, so what better background? So that's our report for the year. Thank you all so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about the active-based learning. You talked about multiple sites. Is there one other than Sparks?
There's, we have, Action-Based Learning is at Genoa, Action-Based Learning is at, so you just said Sparks Gardens? What else? Help me. Red Bluff has it, Jessup has it. So we have several other campuses.
About 18 campuses that through the PEP grant received a classroom lab set, now they're implementing at different levels. So kind of our next steps is to go backwards and revamp and see who's using it, how they're using it. We have some, like the ones mentioned, have gone just...
Gangbusters.
...and crazy, and we're seeing great results, and some that might be collecting dust. So it's kind of...
Yeah, that's what I understood as well, and...
Planning trains for teachers and things, so it's seeing how they're being used on the campuses, the ones that actually have the equipment. And some of the action-based learning doesn't require any equipment, it's just movement with intention that goes with the academic piece.
Yeah.
And, let's see, there was, oh, you talked about coming before the board in February and asking for us to appoint someone. That's really not our job, to appoint someone to a committee. You know, I gave several names last year. I know that Dorothy Elrod was one that I gave. I know that I gave, I think, five or six parents. But normally, I mean, we just can't. It's not something that I feel like, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I don't feel like that, we can certainly make suggestions if we have them, but I don't think we need to get out there and recruit people to serve on the committees.
Right, well, and the reason that we asked you is because we asked other districts how they were managing to get their parents to participate and continually so, and that's how they came back with this, and HISD being one of them. They appoint a representative.
HISD works very differently than...
They do, yes, they do.
Than PISD.
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did nominate Casey Fernandez. Y'all need to follow up with her.
Next item is student achievement. If you look at page 183 through 185, you'll see that we have a lot of kids accomplishing a lot of great things.
Not pentathlon this year, we had some real whippersnappers. I know Pat Sermis can attest to it, but we had some schools and students doing some really amazing things.
Policy update and review? We have none. The next item is financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion regarding the budget amendments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion is carried. Moving on to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval for the sale of a 30-foot wide right-of-way pipeline easement located at Wan Sutton Survey, Abstract 751, to Kinder Morgan Crude and Condensate LLC.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And is there discussion? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Was this, has this been priorly discussed?
Kevin, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, this is a purchase of property, and where, who negotiated the price?
Well, I, we talked about this at cabinet. Normally, when we see these easements, usually, and Kevin, you can correct me, cities and things like that, and you usually see the dollar price tag, that we always wonder if we really get the dollar or not. So Kevin, do you want to come forward to talk about this one, because it's a little different?
Mr. Roberts, I think your question was who negotiated, that was me directly with the, with Morgan, Kinder Morgan. They originally offered us, I think it was close to around $500 per linear rod, and we got it up to 1,500, so, which is...
And it's a 30-foot easement?
Yes, yes.
And how long of easement is it? It's not very long.
Not very long at all.
But it's 30 feet wide?
That's correct.
Did we...
Doesn't it run parallel to another pipeline that's already there?
It does. It cuts across the corner of the Broadway Shaver property, and there's already an enterprise pipeline right next to it, so it's really not going to affect...
So how many feet of easement is there right there? If this is 30 feet wide, is the other easement another 30, or what?
I believe it is.
So that's 60 feet. I guess my question is, is this is, and maybe I'm wrong, and I need to be corrected, but I thought all this stuff was normally brought to the board and discussed on purchases of property, whether it's another municipality, or a pipeline, or whatever the case may be. I just don't remember that we just openly let sale of property go unknown, I mean...
And you correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm very new at this, but easements, did y'all talk about those in executive session? Or was it...
I think we talked about any type of land purchase. I mean, if not, it could be a 30-foot swatch going, if we, it could be 30 feet for 100 feet. And if we say this is okay, then the next one could be 100 feet, or 200 feet, or through the middle of a campus. And I just, excuse me?
That's not going to happen through the middle of a campus.
Well, it's not, it could happen right through the middle of a football field of a campus. I've got the right to say that, Marshall.
I didn't say you didn't.
So let me just finish. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
I'm just asking that land purchases be handled through the executive session, and not just randomly, or not randomly, and I know you did your research, but I just feel like a procedure of things like this should be addressed to the board, because we don't know what's going on.
Well, and that is my fault then, because easements in the past, to my knowledge, had not been brought, so I can, definitely, we can pull this and do it later, or we can, of course, do it in the future.
Let the board vote on it. But what I am saying is that I just feel like land purchases, especially easements, or anything like that, where property is being taken away from the school district, changes things, and so it needs to be discussed.
Freddie, we've been doing this for years.
I don't agree with you, Marshall.
Well, you don't have to agree with me, but the fact is, if we do that, we've got easements all the time.
I don't, I don't remember it. I do not remember it. All I do remember is that on land purchases...
We're not buying, we're selling.
Well, you know what? Let me correct then. Selling property, or buying property for that fact should be discussed, and I feel like should be discussed in closed session. There may be something that someone knows, or do we know for a fact this is a good price? We didn't even consult with anybody other than, did you consult with a real estate individual?
Not on a, not on the easement, no.
Okay, so you just, you just consulted with the individual who is purchasing the property?
Yes, and I went back into historically, how we, what we've sold in the past, and it goes back five or six pipelines, and kind of compare pricing, and...
And I, and I understand why and how you did that, and so on and so forth. But the pricing of land, the pricing of pipeline, and so on and so forth, changes on a pretty regular basis. And all I'm saying is, I feel like this needs to be discussed in executive session, because whether it is a purchase or a sale of property, it should be discussed. You're taking away tax?
We always do.
And it just needs to be discussed.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Kendrick.
You went from 500 to 1,500.
Mm-hmm.
How did you come up with that number?
I went back to the last pipeline that we sold, which I believe was two years ago, and it was $1,000. So took the increases that we've been seeing per year, and that's, that's what the going rate should have been, so countered with that, and they accepted the 1,500 per linear rod.
Is there any other source for determining what linear rods are going for, and that kind of thing today, other than it's been going up naturally? Because these things do change comparatively.
We could check around, see what other pipelines are going for, but I was just going off of historically what we've seen in a district.
This is a sale, this is not...
Thank you.
I have a question. Why wouldn't we give them an easement rather than selling them the property?
They only want a portion of the corner of the property to run the pipeline through, and we can still pave and build over on top of that. So we're really not, it's not affecting future development that we may need for the property itself.
They gave you the right to build over it?
You can pave over top of it.
You can pave, okay.
It's kind of like a property over here on Waters. You know, they've got a pipeline through there, but you can pave over, but if they have to come in there, you tear it up, you know, like parking lot or something.
It's kind of rare that we don't have a piece of property that doesn't have pipelines running through.
Is this, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Is this similar to easements that we grant HLMP and different people for...
Not really.
Okay.
You know, water easements and things that we grant to the city.
I don't, I don't remember. I'm like Fred, I guess I don't remember. I can remember HLMP and stuff like that, but I don't remember.
Yeah, pipelines are a little different breed.
Have we done these often?
We have.
Okay, my memory is not very good, then.
Well, why don't we just have somebody look into it? I think the easement thing, I mean, Jody could look into it and see what the normal thing would be. Normally, it seems like you lease that, you lease those easements...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
...to all pipelines. In my limit, very limited experience, but I guess it'd be interesting to know.
I would say most of the easement leases are...
Well, lease or sale.
There's difference in easement and a sale.
So sale, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but they do both, right? It just depends on what the buyer is asking for, the lessee is asking for. But a lease for an easement typically is going to run you 50 to 100 years most of the time. I mean, they're extremely long easements. So there's not much difference really in sale versus lease, when you're talking about 100, granting 100 years' worth of rights in a single contract. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but I just would say that, you know, we need to, we need to be doing what's best for the district, not what's best for Kinder Morgan, or just make sure that we have done the right research.
Sure.
I agree.
That we handle the, it's our property, we don't have to let them have it, you know?
Correct, right.
Generally, if you don't let them have it, and they really want it, the price goes way up.
And they're coming to condemn it.
Huh?
They'll come and condemn it.
Well...
They've already got a pipeline there. The easement is there.
They do.
They're coming through if they want to, I can guarantee that.
Yeah, they usually, they usually send the paperwork for eminent domain, and...
They're coming, if they'd like it or not.
I just think it'd be something interesting to look for.
I think it would, too.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. And this has been discussed, so do I have a motion to table this till the next meeting?
I move that we table the motion for the next meeting.
Just a second, Mr. Roberts. All of those in favor?
Aye.
How many ayes do I have?
I didn't...
I, I didn't, I didn't give you mine, but go ahead.
Neither do I.
Okay.
I don't vote for it.
Roberts, it's three, and Jack is four.
No, no, I said I did not vote for it.
So, you're against it.
I didn't, I didn't hear you ask for a no. I vote no.
We have two no's entry.
I thought you wanted it!
So...
Oh, I didn't ever say anything. I think, I think, I mean, now that we voted, I think we should have honored what, what Kevin did, but that's beside the point. You know, two losers. But I think we should have honored what Kevin, the deal that he made, and I bet we do before it's over, but that's beside the point.
We'll look into it further and get that information and get back to you.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll move right along. The next item is consideration and possible approval of transfer of 2011 bond program unused project funds to the bond contingency pool.
I say move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of the material testing services agreement for the early college annex at South Houston High School Project.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to ask the question, but it may not be legal.
Ask the question, Mr.
We've got three of these in a row, and they're quite a bit of difference in price from 1949.
Yeah, I know.
I assume that's because the different articles they're going to be building on have different environmental concerns?
Environmental construction suitability, or both?
Or both, huh?
It says it's material testing.
Yeah, the, the testing lab, this is for materials, so they'll be, they'll be testing, because we have existing campuses, they'll be testing different materials. Some are based on more square footage that they're going to be testing materials for. So, there is a, there is a difference in square footage between each of the projects, and they kind of base it off of that, too.
And so, for clarification, as an example, Memorial is going to be in the Card Center.
Correct.
The Dobie one is going to be in a...
Dobie will be within their building once the ninth grade campus.
Within their building, once the ninth grade leaves. Sam Rayburn?
Separate annex building.
A new facility.
Mm-hmm.
And Pasadena High is going to be where it is in South Houston, is going to be in a new facility...
Freestanding.
A freestanding facility.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Is there any other questions or discussions on it?
It's based on square feet.
Hartley, and I talked to the lab, and this is also a not-to-exceed amount, so this is their, if they don't utilize all the testing that they need, we'll, we'll get a refund back on that.
Okay. Well, still, you're building South Houston. You say there are different square footages on these two projects? Is that much different?
Rayburn has a cafeteria within their project. That's one of the reasons for the, it's such a small cafeteria they currently have. We've included that in their plan.
Okay. And Memorial is just standalone on new property.
It's the card.
The Card Center.
Card Center, okay, you're right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kevin. We've had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Next item is consideration and possible approval of material testing services agreement for the early college annex at Sam Rayburn High School Project.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by, is that you, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
If I could, Ms. Sullivan, if I could?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to introduce Paradigm Construction. It's a new contractor to the district. We haven't worked with them in the past. They came highly recommended, good references, they've done a lot of large church, church schools, high schools. They've done First Baptist Christian Academy, Concordia Lutheran High School, Tomball, and Salem Lutheran High School in Tomball, and also Cynthia Woods Pavilion. I think you've done some work on that project also. But I'd like to introduce the president, Dustin Hall, from Paradigm, and also Terry Smith, who's the vice president, and then Gary Fisher is a senior project manager. So, we're looking forward to a good relationship with them.
Welcome to our district.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
They based out of Houston?
Based out of Houston. In the Woodlands, I believe.
In the Woodlands?
Haven't they done work for us before?
No, sir.
The name's familiar.
Yeah, it seems like it.
Didn't it work for PISD? How about South Maine?
Yeah, it does. I mean, it does look...
Sounds familiar to me.
Me, too.
That's just because we've been there so far.
Yeah, probably.
It's a good thing, isn't it? That's right. You may have seen the sign over in Pasadena. I've seen it over there.
Could have been.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right. Maybe that's it.
Consideration and possible approval of materials testing service agreement for the early college annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
I move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion is passed. The next one is...
Kevin, did you want to introduce anyone for this, or...
Actually, I jumped in. It'll come up construction.
Okay.
Same thing.
If you're here and you need to be introduced now, don't leave, because everyone's going to do it. Consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the early college annex at South Houston High School Project and funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the early college annex at Sam Rayburn High School Project and funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
I say move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the early college annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project and funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
What's the difference between, I'm sorry, I say move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion here?
What's, what's the difference between these two? I mean, why do we have two different, couldn't it be, have been combined?
I think they're different contractors.
We actually had them all combined about a month ago, and we ended up rejecting the bids and...
I remember that.
Separated the projects into individual projects.
But we're approving two for Sam Rayburn?
No.
No.
Yes.
No. South Houston, Sam Rayburn, and Pasadena Memorial.
Oh, you said Sam Rayburn when you read it out.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Didn't you?
I make that correction. Number eight is consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the early college annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project and the funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
I move. I correct that.
Is there any discussion on that?
I'd like to introduce Comex Corporation. They've done work with the district, I think, back in 98, Bailey and Pearl Hall.
Right.
2001, Red Bluff, McMaster's, and 2006 additions and renovations to Pasadena Memorial. And I'd like to introduce David Walker, who's the president of Comex.
I think it is.
So, we're looking forward to working with them again, so...
And you're located in Deer Park, aren't you? Laporte. Welcome to our school district once again.
Thanks.
We know you have worked with us before.
We have none. How did that happen?
We will have construction updates, Kevin, next month.
Yes.
We have no communications and no public comments, and I'd like to appoint the board committees. For the personnel committee, Vicki Morgan will be the chairperson. Maricel Kiana and Fred Roberts will serve on that committee. For the policy legislative committee, Maricel Kiana will be the chairperson. Marshall Kendrick and Kenny Fernandez will serve on that committee. The facility committee, Marshall Kendrick will be chairperson. Jack Bailey and Kenny Fernandez will serve on that committee. The naming committee, Fred Roberts is the chairperson, and all board members serve on that committee. Budget committee, Jack Bailey's the chairperson, and all board members serve on that committee. And that is for information only. We need to set a date for the next regular board meeting, and it's suggested for Tuesday, July the 26th.
I move that we approve Tuesday, July 26th, as the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. The board will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties,